Last week was a button in the county clerk's office which included a transfer to, I believe, as an office supplies. And I'm understanding that was coming from an item that was actually grant money. And Jason reached out to our office to check, can, first of all, can we do that? And my opinion, it depends on the terms of the grant. We have to have the express authority within that grant in order to use the money for that purpose. And I told Jason, I would be very cautious in doing that because what you don't want to happen is to transfer that money, use it for a purpose that wasn't intended by the grant, and then you get audited by the grant, and then all of a sudden you can have to take back a portion or the entirety of a grant. So we're going to be careful with those grant funds. Now, Juanita had said, excuse me, that she had spoken with someone, I'm not exactly sure who she had spoken with, that indicated those funds could be used for any purpose for the county clerk's office. I would personally prefer to see something in writing before making that decision because of the issues that we discussed about losing that grant or having to pay that back. The information that was provided to our office, this is a letter dated August 30th, 2018, and there is bold type on it that says the request is made in strictly for the voter registration system and not the election equipment and/or supplies. I think based on that, I would say that you should not use those funds or transfer that to office supplies. That would be my opinion based on what I have in front of me. Now, if Juanita had spoken with someone else and had authority to do that, I think you need to get it in writing to make sure from someone to make sure that it's okay to use those funds for that purpose. But as it stands right now, I wouldn't want to take someone's verbal word that it's okay to do that without some further assurance.
I agree.
So, and we will leave that with Haley then to decide what she wants to do with that fund going forward. Here's that, that's the information on that grant, I think, that she wants to transfer that money from.
Don't think there's anything else?
Nothing else for me? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Tab, do you want to come on up? Usually they put the announcement, but they didn't today.
Is that for amendment?
Yes.
We'll talk about that, I guess, after you get them. Come on over if you want.
List of bills on the back.
Did you get a copy of these, Gerald?
Yes.
Do you have four copies or three?
Yeah.
Is there one right there behind your hand?
There's two.
Okay.
On the back page, there's two bills, one for seventy-seven, fifty, and one for twenty-two thousand. It's money that we've already got in the camp for property damage, it was a lightning strike we had in June. That money's already there, we're just waiting for them to finish up the work.
You think it'll be done?
They are done.
Is that like in the fund or did they put that in insurance account?
It may be in the general fund, but it's designated as property damage.
Okay.
Bills, if somebody's got, it's got to be kept in the line.
Okay.
Do we have any juveniles at Franklin County now or not? Do you have that right there on there? I don't know what you have to think. I have fifty passes, but one transfer, the only two accounts that I'll have over budget is going to be auto expense, which is gasoline and medical.
You know, the chapter general read that before we make the motion.
So we won't transfer over last year from unpaid bill if we just couldn't make it out. How's all your cards been?
Cards been great. A little problem with the annexes, last week, the order's down, but the book's on it Friday, the order's on again yesterday, and Marcia called me last night and said it was still off.
So that switch didn't fix it they ordered?
No.
You all talked to Tom?
He's looking at the version we're working on.
Ken?
The one we got is what we're going to next, we'll leave here.
Okay. Their part was pretty expensive. I think a thousand bucks.
Does it matter?
Yeah. I don't know for sure what it's worth. It's something like this. Don't want to bring by and stuff we don't need it. We want to make the right part.
Yeah, you can't take it back.
Ted, you just had Susan's file. Letter.
Yes.
Did you see that, that those cameras in there?
Okay.
It said, you know, at the bottom, more information, give them a call. So they made a grant to several counties, but...
I mean, that's something we're going to have to go through eventually, but just right now, we don't want to do it.
Okay.
There is more to it than just wearing the body cameras. You've got to have a circle big enough to capture all the video, and with the amount of people we've got, it's basically going to take one person full time to take care of the video for the body cameras and the car cameras. I mean, it's kind of, but I pull along as long as I can.
You want to look at his budget change requests and let me all the papers?
Sandy, I guess, last week she got a check from State of Illinois for reimbursement for at least two or three of people who sent the corrections. It was like ten thousand dollars. And most of the line is back.
What portion they used to pay after that?
Every, like sixty-six percent. Said the law enforcement side, they pay a hundred percent, they're still only paying like sixty-six percent of corrections, but they pay like a year behind. So these are guys that trained last year, will just not get the money for it.
I asked Agent Jeff, I want you to look at that too. It's documents, switching the old people out and some counts, putting new people in.
Yes. I think it's thirty, ten o'clock. I guess a motion by Gerald then to...
I've got a motion.
Add amendments to the sheriff's budget, and I'll second a motion then. I think there's something on there that should be missed if I had on that.
Pay the son of a...
Okay. Is that all you got?
All right.
Thank you.
You can just keep that until it comes out. Joey, you want to come on?
Sit down there and talk to us, how's things going? I guess it's going good so far. Good. So we have payroll there, right? We do. Okay. And... That was a chance. I guess you're still waiting on the highway reimbursements? Mm-hmm. Joe Mattis said it when he comes in, he'll come down to your office and give you that stuff, so. So are you saying this what the balance is after highway reimbursement? Yes. Okay. I'll pass this around with Jeff and Gerald. Well, any issues in your department and then you want to report on it, or anything going on? Um, we're just getting acclimated. Getting acclimated. Do you happen to have a copy of the 2019 proposed for the treasurer's office? Yes. I'll give it to you. If you want a copy of it, you can just bring it back. I would please. How about on your computer system, was John Long and Chris able to help get everything taken care of yesterday, or do you need more work to do? Or what? Yes, they were there yesterday. How's that going? Well, okay. So you're able to log on, get into everything you need? Yes. I think John actually left his phone in my office yesterday. And he'll play it back today. Yeah, if you make, make however many copies of each other, then just bring it back. Yes, I will. And you have a letter for the banks? Yes. Yeah, we're passing around, letting Jeff and Gerald look at it. Thanks.
Gerald, you got any questions for the non-military treasurer?
Love you. Appreciate you tonight. Go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let me start with the lead.
Start with Mr. Burger there.
Rodney. Rodney. Rodney, there I do it, I did it here. I promise, I'll try to...
Good one with my brother, he's not some stranger.
How's things going in your office?
It's going good.
Busy?
Yeah. We need to get that, Joey, to sign my signature card, let people come in and get their check. I guess the bank needs a memo from you guys to sign.
Yeah, we've, we have some stuff there, so...
If you can get that as soon as you can.
Yeah, we're signing it today. We're ready to do the things and do that. If there's something else you need, just let us know.
It's hot downstairs.
I mean, I was in the, this is office down there, it's about ninety-five degrees.
We don't have any heat, you want to get us something?
Yeah. We're turning it down.
You said the other way around.
They've been working on it for two days.
I wonder what they're doing.
There's some dudes working on it. I read on it.
Just come down here, he's sweating. Did you see the, what I brought down there, did you, in the hall closet? It's more private. Where are they? They're in the main lobby. When you walk in, take a lap, and there's a closet, that's what they told me, just tell me, I couldn't find you, I think you were in court.
Is it this Friday or next Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
The times it started?
Yeah.
I got a closing, I think.
Oh.
But it won't take very long, except GIAs.
Are you coming?
I'll see if I can get it done for you. Oh, I got a good gig too. I got a good GIAG gig.
Ah.
That's good.
I gotta decide what I'm representing. Are you coming, Michelle?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandra, you want to come on up?
No.
Sit down there and talk to us, how's things going?
I guess it's going good so far.
So we have payroll there, right?
We do.
Okay. And...
That was a chance.
I guess you're still waiting on the highway reimbursements?
Mm-hmm.
Joe Mattis said it when he comes in, he'll come down to your office and give you that stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
So are you saying this what the balance is after highway reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay. I'll pass this around with Jeff and Gerald. Well, any issues in your department and then you want to report on it, or anything going on?
Um, we're just getting acclimated.
Okay.
Getting acclimated. Do you happen to have a copy of the 2019 proposed for the treasurer's office?
Yes. I'll give it to you, if you want a copy of it, you can just bring it back.
I would please.
How about on your computer system, was John Long and Chris able to help get everything taken care of yesterday, or do you need more work to do, or what?
Yes, they were there yesterday.
How's that going?
Well, okay.
So you're able to log on, get into everything you need?
Yes. I think John actually left his phone in my office yesterday.
Okay.
And he'll play it back today.
Yeah, if you make, make however many copies of each other, then just bring it back.
Yes, I will. And you have a letter for the banks?
Yeah, we're passing around, letting Jeff and Gerald look at it.
Okay, thanks.
Gerald, you got any questions for the non-military treasurer?
Love you. Appreciate you tonight. Go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Want to start with the lead?
Start with Mr. Burger there.
Rodney.
Rodney.
Rodney, there I do it, I did it here.
Gosh.
I promise, I'll try to...
Good one with my brother, he's not some stranger.
How's things going in your office?
It's going good.
Busy?
Yeah. We need to get that, Joey, to sign my signature card, let people come in and get their check. I guess the bank needs a memo from you guys to sign.
Yeah, we've, we have some stuff there, so...
If you can get that as soon as you can.
Yeah, we're signing it today. We're ready to do the things and do that. If there's something else you need, just let us know.
Okay.
It's hot enough.
It's hot downstairs.
I mean, I was in the, this is office down there, it's about ninety-five degrees.
We don't have any heat, you want to get us something?
Yeah.
I'd love to.
We're turning it down.
You said the other way around.
They've been working on it for two days.
I know, but we're still not... I wonder what they're doing.
There's some dudes working on it. I read on it.
Just come down here, he's sweating.
Yeah, I guess.
Panic, we're going to run it all.
Did you see the, what I brought down there, did you, in the hall closet? It's more private.
No, I didn't.
More private.
Where are they?
They're in the main lobby. When you walk in, take a lap, and there's a closet, that's what they told me, just tell me, I couldn't find you, I think you were in court.
Is it this Friday or next Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
I'm staying at the works, twenty minutes.
What time's it start?
Noon.
I got a closing, I think.
Oh.
But it won't take very long, except GIAs.
Are you coming?
I'll see if I can get it done for you. Oh, I got a good gig too.
Are you still?
I got a good GIAG gig.
Ah.
That's good.
I gotta decide what I'm representing. Are you coming, Michelle?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandra, you want to come on up? You're not on the agenda, come on up.
No, I'm just in an emergency situation.
Okay.
Here's the letter, I'll just run it out to see.
Okay. So what happened, she called me yesterday, Alan, do you want to explain what happened to them so they understand?
We had ordered our checks for our main account from Howard Happy, and like, Howard Happy called me yesterday and said when the checks were delivered to them, the box was open, and five hundred of the checks were missing. So I caught, well, texted him, and then I called the bank, and of course, they won't stop payment on five hundred checks, there's no way they can. So they want us to close that account down and open a new one, which is going to be a nightmare, but I can see another option. I called them at Howard Happy again this morning before I came up here to see if they had any more news on it, or if they'd found the checks or anything, and she's, they had filed a claim with UPS, which is a delivery service, but they said it would take probably about seven days to, for the investigation to find out.
Where were they coming from?
Mayfield. Well, Howard Happy's in Mayfield, I don't know where they ordered the checks. I don't know, that I don't know.
So somewhere between, they, they did drop ship them or they shipped them from Howard Happy, I guess, or?
No, they, I didn't get them, Howard Happy has them.
Gotcha.
I don't have them.
Gotcha.
It came from whoever printed them to Howard Happy, and when it got to Howard Happy, the box was torn up, was opened, and five hundred of the checks were lost. It's, that's two, they're wrapped in plastic, two hundred and fifty in a bundle, and there's two bundles missing.
Was that ever paid for?
Well, nothing's came through yet because I've checked the account and there's nothing, I mean, there's...
Which bank is it on?
City National. We have an account up there that we don't use a lot, and they wanted us to roll the money over into there, but I don't, legally, I don't think we can. It's the child support maintenance fund. I don't think that can be done.
So basically, she just had to type up something we want to sign, and she has to take it to the bank to get them authorization?
To give them, it just tells them what happened, and then authorizes them to close that account up and in.
I didn't know you could buy checks from somebody other than the bank. What's the advantage, I think?
Sometimes it's cheaper, I don't know, you get them anywhere, you get them online or anything. But we've always, I mean, we've just always ordered from Howard Happy, even when they're , well, we had that, I think that Owens, but they closed down.
How much money's in that account?
Right now, there's like five hundred and fifteen thousand, cents of change.
We definitely want to close that one.
And the bad part is, I just wrote all the checks Friday.
So how they going to do that? They going to accept and honor those checks?
They're going to honor, I've got a list here, printed out a report of all the checks that are still outstanding, and they said when we get the new account open, that they will honor these checks from the new account.
Well, it's good that they notified you as soon as they noticed it.
It is, and the lady feels so bad about it, and I did, I tactfully asked her this morning, what did the guy say when he brought them and the box was open? Because usually you would, you get a shipment in, you kind of check things first before they leave. And she said she didn't know because he just brought everything in, like on the two-wheel or whatever, but several boxes of stuff, and set it down and left, and then they brought her our checks to process and send out to us. And that's when she noticed the box was open. She didn't know. So anyway, I'll pay them, head to the bank then.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Wait, let me...
It's Abby.
Abby. How's things going on with the highway?
Same as always, I guess.
Equipment's all good and...
Uh, well, you know, I wouldn't say...
We all putting up any of those signs that Abby made you?
Yeah, I think we got most of them. Close off.
You all notice any signs out there missing, Gerald or Jeff, or anything that needs to be replaced?
I don't know. No, it's not my head, I'm sure there's a couple somewhere. Those is...
She had another list, didn't she? She's working on for you?
I, yeah, I gave her another list when I picked up those. And there's just, yeah, there's signs everywhere that need to be replaced. I don't really have enough time to go out and make lists either.
I know, I just see them people calling me.
Yeah, yeah, we try to put them on the list as far as when people call. Yeah, a couple of things I was wanting to bring up. We had talked about trading tractors, you know, and that sixty-four hundred tractor that we had some issues with this summer, we spent money on transmissions and stuff getting fixed. We were wanting to try to trade that one off and get a newer tractor, and I guess there's several options. I mean, I've got, I talked to Patrick about it, if you trade for used equipment, we can do that without bidding it out, but it would have to be passed by an ordinance that you guys authorized you to trade in for a piece of used equipment. I got a quote on a machine that Hudson's has, to John Dear, that they had sent down to the Tennessee DOT to use mowing, but Tennessee DOT didn't actually use that mower, so there's like only fourteen hours on it, so they're selling it as a used machine. That was the one option I thought was a pretty good option. If we want to try to trade it in for a new one, then I would have to actually advertise that and bid, and be more processed. I did, they did send me some quotes on new ones too, and it's, you know, generally speaking, it's around eight to eight thousand or more to do a new one. When I say more, that's just because if you get a different model with higher horsepower and stuff, it's more, more than eight thousand. But anyway...
Who do you deal with from Hudson's? Do you deal with Duke?
Um, Alex Hahn is, he's the government account manager, I guess you would say, for Tennessee, for Kentucky and Illinois.
Is that tractor same size?
It is slightly bigger than the sixty-four hundred, but it's slightly smaller than the other two we have. It's basically like a hundred and five horse, engine with eighty-nine horse, that's the PTO plenty horsepower. Yeah, the other one was like eighty-five at PTO, and it's fine. But, you know, the other one? Yeah. I wouldn't say that now, but there's still some snakes with it. You know, we replaced all the transmissions and everything, and there's still some weird things happening with it. It's just not acting right. And it's an older machine, I mean, this is, this is a picture of a new one here that is not, it's one that we wanted to get, but, you know, there's other, other options too. I mean, if you...
I'm not sure you're asking for that one.
The difference is thirty-eight thousand. Our, trading our again, the difference, they're basically wanting to sell that one for like fifty, fifty-five, but actually, they're knocking a few thousand off for us because we're...
Fifty, an hour to go, you have one of those tractors, you know?
Our tractor's like six thousand four hundred or something like that, or sixty-eight hundred or something.
So what do they want to be, like sixteen or seventeen hundred, or fifteen? Fifteen. Is that fair, I mean, is that fair, or what, do you think that's low ball near this, or?
No. Well, considering the discount they've given us on this one, I think it's pretty fair. We spent about ten thousand on it here this past year, hoping for transmissions and everything.
What's that, what model was it?
The, the old one we had with John Dear, was sixty-four hundred. It's a cab two or whatever. What you call that, it's not four-wheel drive, but it's basically the front wheel's a six, is what it is.
Oh, true.
MFWB, I guess they call it.
Is there a reason that behind the Tennessee, you said only used it fourteen hours? Do you think they had a problem with it, or they just didn't need it?
I guess they just didn't need it.
I don't know if it was possible to... Is it getting warranty with it when you buy it like this?
Yeah, I asked him to send that to me, and he said he would yesterday, but he didn't.
So what do you think of the B E D somehow?
Normally on a new one, it's two years, two thousand hours, but I don't know, this one being a used one, maybe one of the years might be up, or we may just get one year on it.
Maybe you can just say, for the deal to get done, we'll give you two years, two thousand, two thousand hours. And they might agree to it.
I mean, if that's the route you think is best for us to go, then I can put that on the agenda for next week, and we can vote on it, and I can negotiate with the county.
Jeff and Gerald don't want more about this stuff now.
If you think we need to bid it out and go for it, maybe a different brand of them than that, I mean, I mean, we did get some quotes for an international that was, it was less money, but it was six hundred and forty hours on it, so basically the same. Yeah. I mean, yeah. Also, you know, international, and if you did new, you can let anybody bid, I wouldn't have let, little bit on Coyote, little bit on Cobolos, and down there bid, you know. And we worked for a similar price, but I, I don't know that one would have either happened.
You get us, no, you get us a little bit, somewhere in the nine or ten, for close to fifty. So what do you think?
Thanks for the mother nothing.
I don't know that it matters all that much, but I mean, having all, all the same brand might end up helping us out a little bit. Just because the deal with one place to get all the stuff. I don't, I don't know. Just from what the guys out there say, not everybody really likes John Deere all that much. But they just have one of the higher resale trade-in, you know, they just hold their value a lot better than any other tractor does. Everybody loves John Deere.
Quarter, quarter trader, they're getting pretty, pretty fair prices on trade-in. You're right there. It's pretty fair, fifteen minutes. And I gotta ask where they take it, but the ones on there sell for anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two, so that's fair to me.
Those other two are figuring out.
Yeah, the two we had to do, um, you know, maintenance type work on it each year, like replace all the injectors and something. That, that just, you know, one of those items that wear out after so many hours. But other than that, those other two that we have that we bought new several years back, from everyone out there, they said we haven't hardly done much of any work on them. They've been pretty good performing achievements and pretty dependent on them.
What year do they mow it? Low or second? Depending on where they're mowing it?
I'm sure they're mowing, yeah, second or third, but I can't say sure.
I'd say it depends on the terrain. Like this, that'd be, that'd be extra low.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they mow in slopes that I wouldn't be comfortable on, but...
I know.
Again, I'm not a big tractor user or anything like that, so...
I've seen them put it in places that I would want to put them.
Yeah. So I'll put that on next week's agenda or maybe I guess we'll put that on next week.
The same time, same time?
It, I don't, well, yeah, whatever time we had scheduled before, but... I'll have to get the exact lingo from Patrick maybe, but I think it's voted on ordinance that I use it.
So y'all feel like that's pretty good then?
I don't know what the, I don't know what that would be worth with fourteen hours, it's a tough one there.
Yeah.
But it's basically like a new tractor.
How much are they? It's a two, well, the, yeah, the other quotes, they're selling this one for fifty-three, I think it was like, um...
A new one just like it's?
Yeah, a new one just like it, but I, it was like sixty-seven or sixty-eight. And that's the government price. That's not the... You would not buy it or Darryl would have to do it.
On seventy-five or ninety?
Eighty-five, I think.
Just trying to press them hard and give you that two-year warranty, you know? Since it says it's only got fourteen hours, would you say two-year, two-hundred hours?
I think that's normal, but I'll just, I'll have to take two years or two thousand.
Two thousand hours, okay.
I'll have to talk to Alan again, but, you know.
Just tell him that it's really, really fine. Maybe save you some money.
Tell him, tell him to bother me if they call. He showed up next year, won't call back.
Did you pass him around or?
No, I haven't, no. The next thing, I was going to ask you. The office, the office at, my office is, the roof is getting really bad on it. There's missed, a lot of shingles missing, been blown off. And it's, some of them busted, haven't noticed them, noticed it leaking as of yet. Can't be repaired, but it's putting shingles back, getting some shingles back on. Well, it's, you know, it looks like it's just erratic, shingles everywhere missing. And it looks really old, like it's been deteriorated.
Same way?
No, there's two on there. I got a quote, which I'm not sure if it's the right everything on it, but I got a quote from American Roofing to replace it. It's like fourteen thousand. And we do have to just, you know, tear off the old layers and dispose of it and put the new on. It would have, he told me it would have been a lot less, but because of how he had been did it with wage rates.
Selling wages.
Preventing wage rates, so that's why it was that expensive. I have, he just bid it based on whatever wage rates the city has. I'm gonna get a copy of ours and take it to him to make sure that he did the right rates, stuff.
How many square feet is in that building?
How many squares was it, remember? He didn't put it on the quote. Just a couple, Darren Mill, I mean, he, he does roofings, he's a licensed roofer too, you're in town. Get a couple of prices if you want. Um, Jeff, you know anyone that's licensed that?
I thought, um, Tim White, I think he's, he's licensed.
Fourteen seems kind of high.
Fourteen's a good one.
But like you said, selling wages. I thought it'd be more like about eight thousand.
How many square feet are four to the other?
No, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably, you know, building's probably twenty-eight wide and it's probably, I guess it's probably fifty foot long. I'd say about fifteen hundred and fifty. Probably close to fifteen, sixteen, there and quarter feet.
Is that replacing the decking if they needed and stuff to, did he say?
Well, on the quote, it had, you know, to tear off the old roof and dispose of it. Put ice shield on the lower three feet all the way around. And, well, I guess not all the way around, but both sides, you know, where the things that went together. And moved felt pa, new felt paper and new shingle. And then replacing the wally fans and some of those things, but that's just standard, yeah.
New boots and?
Yeah, rubber boots and stuff. But, but the thing that I need, need to really, really talk to you is that, you know, I've got no, absolutely no line item or nothing in a budget for that kind of work. If, you know, I, I guess, you know, highway department covers, the highway department expenses out there as far as buildings and maintenance is concerned, then I'm gonna have to either add a line item to my budget, and I think y'all would have to vote on me doing that, and I'll have to amend my budget. Because currently we have no line item for building maintenance or ground, building or ground maintenance out there. I don't know how it's handled in the past, I mean...
Is that something you're looking at doing next spring, probably not putting the roof on the winter, or?
Yeah, no, I'm not, there's, I'm gonna call and try to get it passed along.
No, I'm not, yeah, I would assume that not a roofer wouldn't even want to do it in the winter.
Right.
Probably wait till it warms up enough where shingles will stay.
Sure.
So, um... I don't know what has to be done, if needed, bring that up. But if that has to be an agenda item, it has to be put on the agenda and we have to vote on it or what, but...
Well, if you get it within your budget, you should filter it as, as needed, you know? But we'll have to amend your budget or look at it, talk to Patrick or Josh on how we should do that.
Patrick said that we have to create, you might have to vote on us creating a line item for it, which is, you know, building and grounds maintenance.
Right.
And the general county highway budget, that's where we have to be. We'd have to assign one of those numbers to it. I don't quite know the secret behind that, other than just take the next available one. But I could come up with all that information if you want me to, and we can vote on it. And then I would have to assign a, you know, an amount to it, a budget amount to it, to amend, amend my budget for next year to do that.
Joe, do you think a metal roof would work? Would you kick them?
Metal roof would probably be twice as expensive.
Oh, really?
It would work, but it'd be much higher.
Except you wouldn't have the tear off.
Possibly.
What metal is that?
Yeah, I mean, metal tire and then they have to install additional strips.
Yeah.
To be able to attach it to it, depending on whether you got standing seam or screw down. I don't even know if they make screw downs, I guess they do. That'd be a different product.
I'll work on the, you know, budget, tie them, plan them, keep it put down, we can make it bigger. I'll give you enough a number. I don't know who that, I mean, who? Would we assign our own number or do you not?
I would say the treasurer, JJ, would do that.
JJ?
Yeah, she would come up with a number for you. And there'd be a sign and then that way we can coordinate that with the budget. I'll ask her this morning, maybe.
And the only other thing, uh, I had a conversation last week with the person that I got, that working on the divisions for meeting townships. It's just one of those funds that they've set up to help the county townships, give them a little supplemental money to, uh, to spend. But there's, there's requirements that you have to meet before you'd be eligible for meeting township money. And one would, one, the main one is to, we have to be levying the maximum amount of taxes by law for the road district. And, you know, so for the unit road and the unit bridge accounts, we're supposed to be maximum, levying the maximum amount. And as far as I know, we've been doing that for a long time. However, she had called me on this and was questioning me about it because of the name on our tax levy. For years, they've been calling the tax levy, quote unquote, corporate. And she said that is not right. She said that it needs to be changed. The unit bridge one is called special unit district bridge, and that's correct. The amount is correct. The sixteen and a half cent percent, sixteen and a half cents per hundred, which is point one six five percent, under the tax called corporate, it's supposed to be called special unit district road. And she said if we don't correct that, it's gonna give us some problems down the road being eligible for these things. I wrote that down here and I, I don't know, you know, as far as this past year, what's done is done. I guess next year when we levy the taxes though, we can check into this and rename it this. But I've got a contact on here, somebody at the Illinois Department of Revenue, did present a question.
We did that to him. They're actually gonna work on that some this afternoon, uh, earlier, before lunch, I think around ten thirty. I think John is gonna come by and work with Haley on the levy, just kind of start working on it. If you want to come by and be a part of that conversation, you can, or whatever. If you don't, just want to make sure all the numbers are accurate, you know?
Yeah, I have to take all my information.
Yeah.
And the laws as, as far as that, but I mean, the sixteen and a half, I know for those in particular too, the sixteen and a half cents per hundred and the five cents per hundred is, is accurate on what maximum by law is for the unit road.
I mean, nothing's gonna be finalized today, it's just, we're just gonna start working on it. Just, it has to be passed, I think by the third Tuesday of this month. So we're just trying to get started on it.
On a decent time, I didn't know what, I didn't know when you'd do that.
It's the third Tuesday of December, it has to be passed. So we're just trying to get started on it. Jeremy's gonna be here today with health insurance, do you all have any issues or concerns in your own department or any of you that talk to him about?
Not his whole department, no, I mean, other than knowing what the rates gonna be for next year, so we can...
Yeah.
That was one thing that, see that, I, I don't know why or how it falls through the cracks, but nobody ever lets us know in time. I guess when the rates raised, when I moved my budget last year for my personal insurance, for the motor fuel fund, I didn't budget enough money to cover it all. So, I mean, we're reimbursing the maximum amount according to the budget, but it's not covering at all. That's neither here nor there. Next time I'm gonna budget more money, and this rate for two thousand nineteen, I've already budgeted too little. But I'll start budgeting more. But anyway, this, yeah, as far as if there's gonna be an increase for next year, just so we could, we know.
I just didn't know if there's anything you need to address with him, issues your employees have.
Well, I'm not, I don't facilitate those. I mean, when my employees have issues, I give them, Jeremy's, and they call in. And I know we recently here, two of our employees are gonna be having some major expenses and, and some surgeries and things. And they both have called him about some things for that. And, uh, so I don't know any details on either situation. I wanted to even talk about it with him intelligently, so let's, I'm just trying to have the people take care of the business with him personally.
Joe, talk to Paragraf, uh, if there's a crisis, I didn't find any...
You might have got that, you might get that. Yeah, I, I got that and I read that.
Send you why? I won't have to send you why, I have my date or something. I think that's what it is, isn't it? I might be the condition.
Yeah, I have to do that on a, I mean, I, I inspect all of our bridges and I, I have all the, I mean, they would just be collecting information from me and respitting it back. I thought they didn't look at it. Seventy-five, they're not gonna look at anything, they're just gonna write a report, most likely. Thing worse, as a county engineer, I, I'm the program manager over all of our bridges and I'm gonna do all the inspections and do all the reporting to the state of Illinois on, on bridges whenever, you know, as far as the codes and inspections and anything like that. That's not to say when they gather all this information and see what the condition of, of some of them are, that they might not, they might be able to go and facilitate trying to get more money to do those things. But, uh, but yeah, I, I mean, I, they, I had talked to Crystal about that briefly a while back, but I mean, I haven't talked to her about it.
What'd you do about them?
Well, she was saying something about, yeah, I mean, I'm sure she's gonna have to get with me and the other county engineers to do this report, whatever we're doing. One of the big bridges that's on the forefront of my thought about trying to get it replaced and trying to find funding for it is this railroad bridge. I believe those over the railroad on Country Club Road. I mean, some of they have a, I've applied a couple of times for great property protection fund money for it. This year I haven't heard back from, from it yet, but... Yeah, I mean, if anyone has any political ties and can, if you want to hear of any of the representatives or anything to say that I have any discretionary money to follow down here to replace that, I'd, I would love to be part of those discussions.
That's a major, a plus job, isn't it?
Depending on what we can get away with, it could be right around a million if we just cut the bridge out and replace it. And if, if they make us do a bunch of approach work, it could be millions.
I see, you're gonna have to run those out, son, but not, so it won't be so steep or... You'll raise a couple of eight, I guess.
Wouldn't have to raise it.
Oh, you won't?
It's so narrow. I mean, and that's, yeah, if, if they made you, if they, you know, wanted us or made us widen it out or lengthen the approaches out, it could run into a million of dollars. Then we would have to buy more right away. And you can't just go out and buy right away. You gotta go through the IDIAC formula, have about eight different consultants to do studies on it and, and all this, and that and the other, and offer them premium dollar for the, I mean, it's, it's a more deal, it is a huge more deal. Two, three? Five? No, I don't know, probably closer to five. You can't get that. That's also a good reason. Just come, bring that in, maybe, probably three, two years, three. The Illinois is really good at creating jobs for people.
I'll say on the northeast side, it's pretty close, I believe, man.
The alternative though is a pretty bleak one. I don't know what's, I mean, if you can't get it done, the only option would be is whenever the bridge gets in bad enough shape, close it down. So you can, you know, that would, that would save a lot of people and that, you know, that's made, that's like, I've always said, that's a major thoroughfare for this county. That's probably one of the highest volume, if not the highest volume road we've got in our system. So, and I've, and I've talked to Southern Fine about that specific bridge, you know, see if they can help finding money and finding... Nothing's happened yet, I mean, I don't know that they know or anything. Talked to seventy-five, I've talked to other people that I know throughout the state. I've actually applied for Great Crossing money and haven't got funded on it yet. But if I do get funded on that one, that's a sixty forty. They do sixty percent and we gotta come up with forty percent. Still a pretty big chunk of money that we have to come up with to replace it if that was to take. And if, you know, we're talking about if they make us do a bunch of approach work and widen it out and everything and it turns out to be three or four million dollars, we don't have forty percent. If it's a million dollars, yeah, we can maybe scrape together forty percent, just on cutting the bridge out and replacing it.
Okay, okay. We got a lot of stuff today.
Yeah?
Ready to snow this weekend?
I don't know. So it's on Saturday, ain't it?
It's, uh, yeah. Every, everything I've seen says it's gonna rain Saturday and maybe freezing rain Sunday. But, I don't know. I just got a thing before I come here this morning, saying we could get it dusted today. I might, uh, I might subscribe to the Bill Johnson's little deal, I think he's a little bit more...
He thinks pitching the area a little bit more.
Yeah, I think he's a little more...
He said buy cookies, take your milk and cookies back tonight.
He's, uh, he's more of a...
I don't see a forecast, thinking and staying on top.
What's his open house over the weekend? You ever been there? It's phenomenal.
It's beautiful outside.
It's, it's phenomenal. It's...
I would love to do that.
Three story plus another story with a hatch, with the observation deck. It's, it's, the weather room is just, it's, it's pretty awesome. Really awesome.
Had no idea what I was looking at. I'm, I'm kind of a weather guy. I, I love watching the weather, watching the forecasts and everything like that. I would, I would have enjoyed that, I didn't know.
He had screens for everything. He's got it all up there. There was a bunch of people, several hundred came through. When we left, there was, we couldn't even leave, there was people trying to jump out the driveway. Everybody was at a gridlock, depending whether to go forward or backwards.
Right.
That took us twenty minutes, going near the super land.
Yeah.
Just had two roads coming in. It was, it was, it packed. Yeah, the freshmen, so it was a nice thing to... Open his old house up, muddy outside, people trolling through.
Crazy.
Beautiful place. See y'all later.
Please, please, do you have a stamp there or?
No, I've just been signing.
Okay, I know, you gotta give me an email to sign or all the twine's? So I can then do a sign for you or?
Um, you can give me Christina, she can...
Do you have to, or what do I do, or do you have to?
When, um, Chalk Trimmer's supposed to be in here, I think, the end of this week. And the C E O you were asking me about, it doesn't have a name on it.
It doesn't?
So what we have is...
It's fine, okay.
All right, that's the channel. I talk to our channel, which is kinda pure eyes, uh, voices are made clear. I mean, um, but next year's, we go, I've got, uh, I've secured a, or Peter, uh, Peter Mayvai, Peter, for another private channel that we can set up and have Bill talk to my county work and encrypt it where nobody can actually hear us, scanning, cannot hear us uh, during our operations. So, and directly like fifteen thousand dollars revenue and the one that I found from one of my friends, this fire chief over Marshall, he sent us for fifteen hundred. So, that's for the, the Peter.
Yeah, for, yeah, it's different than our dispatch room. Guess we're ready to start whenever you are.
All righty.
So, um, I know you had some questions about our E O C grant reimbursements and the last update we gave you was that the comptroller, they were still pending with them. Well, hey, uh, yesterday we received part of the reimbursement, I couldn't get the exact amount from Brian. He couldn't give me the, find the documents, I had the full amount, but I got to do some more research on it. But we got a reimbursement for five thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Um, I'll have to get it, I guess, to the treasurer today to go ahead and get, go back into the general fund, the fund, the statements where we pulled the funds from.
Right.
So we got that, that's for the E O C grant. We haven't received any reimbursement from the E O, from the E M P grant yet. So, uh, any of our items that we have purchased, which that's our normal, our E M P performance grant where we usually get, they allow us fifteen thousand dollars a year for reimbursements. We've not received any of those yet.
Now, when you get that check to them today, you'll have the original where it showed how much that we took out, 'cause I don't have that with me, but...
I can get that from the office, I can get it from the office.
That way, uh, the treasurer will know how much has been paid. That way, we, we will still know the difference that needs to be paid by.
Okay.
She, you know, we have a new treasurer, she might not know exactly where that's at. So if you have a copy of it, I'll, it'll help her, you know what I mean?
Um, but we do, we do reimbursement of five thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents from the E O C grant. The, uh, I wanna go ahead, you know, I know we, uh, I was talking about agency, having agency pride and, uh, you know, with any agency, especially the volunteers, our goal is to, is everybody have a little bit of pride in their agency. And marketing your agency, let, let it, your logo or your patches, wherever they be, it's a very big thing, especially to people. We have, I have developed a patch and drew it from my little scratches, giving it to everybody. We've got patches designed.
You guys gonna have them?
Um, we've got our patches. The patch, it actually represents, represents everything on that patch actually tells a story. From our hazmat, our, uh, star of life represents our mass casualty trailer. The bow hazard sign, that of course, that's any bow, that bow threat that you, uh, honeywell, for example. We've got hazmat, which represents us going out on anything like mass casualty on interstate involving hazard materials. Um, and inside, you know, the, as the triangle from back in the day, that, uh, right now represents what threats currently can go against our county. Tornado, flooding, any seismic activity. And then, um, the eighteen forty-three on the outside, of course, that's when Massacre County was created. It has a little story and it's what will be going on our uniforms and coats.
So what's it, that's a placard down there at the bottom?
That's the hat, yeah, yeah, that's a haz, for hazmat. But then it is for everybody, everybody can keep their, keep that. But, uh...
Sarge? Huh? This is Art?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if anybody collects patches or not, but that's one thing we've, uh, kinda designed. My high school drawing, I had a lady, uh, actually a company that the sheriff's office uses, the M L one throwing down in North Carolina. I had, I had a little, my, my daughter's little sketch pad that drew a little circle and I'm like, I don't know. And so she made it come to life for us, so...
Looks pretty good, looks good. Looks professional.
Yeah. It wasn't a bad deal for fifteen day production, it was three hundred and fifty dollars for a hundred patches, which that's about the going rate nowadays, so, but they're, uh, really good quality and, you know... So the next thing is, we have, right now, we do not have any way, aside from our social media platform, um, to contact our residents in the county, you know, in case of emergencies, send out anything, anything major. Why is, uh, for example, any flooding for, let's say we have Joppa or Burkeport has any flooding. Of course, that comes from Massacre County, so where emergency management's gonna be involved. Our goal is to be able to reach everybody in the county for anything. Um, I have made contact with a company, it's called Code Red. Um, Code Red is a mass message, is a mass, uh, plat, is a platform to send out notifications for emergency weather, um, flooding, anything of nature. We can send voice messages to everyone. What they do is if, if we was assigned with this company, they go on a map and they draw an outline of Massacre County. And, uh, we can upload our nine one one files into it, um, our phone numbers from nine one one, or, um, people, our residents can go online or in an app and sign up that their phone numbers and their email address is in there. And what that does is, let's say we have, um, a road closure from the road department, says, hey, the road, road's gonna be closed. We can, uh, get in there and we can send out, hey, uh, this road will be closed from so and so time and it sends it out. Um, if we have a tornado warning, it will call, we can call their phones and say, says, you know, there's a tornado warning from Massacre County. They'll either hear my voice or whoever's voice when we get it all set up, if we wish to get it set up. If we have only a certain area that is affected by, uh, let's say there's an explosion of some sort or anything, a chemical release, uh, we can just circle on a map and it will know that it's just those impacted individuals instead of scanning everybody else in the county. I know, you know, tornado sirens are only meant for, to be heard outside. They're not meant to penetrate through any walls. It's more less to get inside and shelter, shelter in place of a situation. So this would come in handy in that kind of a situation. And then also, our elderly in the county, some of them, they don't have, some of them, you know, they're, live at the poverty level. They can, some of them don't have TV, some of them, they only have a landline and it's usually sometimes provided by, you know, whether a government, uh, supplemental. Um, we could send out, when, when we activate the system, they...
Make sure Gerald knew you handed this, what he's talking, he's talking about this.
Yeah, I, okay. It would send, they would answer the phone and it would say, they hear recording. Um, if, or something was to happen at the school and we had to evacuate the school, we can send a notification up to everybody in Massacre County. Um, there's options to partner with schools in there, of course, that raises the cost of...
To answer this, does, this platform, do they sell advertisement on it?
No, this is all, this is strictly...
So only time you would ever get a message or phone call if there's an emergency.
That's right.
This information isn't sold out to another party that, because what you worry about is you're getting, uh, notices and it's for advertisement stuff and you get to the point where, well, it's just more advertisement, so you don't pay attention to it. It gets the situation deleted where it's not important.
The, I, I was talking with him, 'cause I, I, I asked him that question. He said if federal law regulates, they cannot do that. And I told him, I said, we do not, if it was perceived with whatever we've decided, um, you know, we wouldn't want that. And he said that federal law requires when they cannot do, do any advertisements and it has to work for this platform being an emergency basis. That is, they said that it, they cut it, they will not do anything like that. So, another, also something else, if you have the application Code Red installed on your phone, um, let's say you live up in New Quambia and a situation happens in Burkeport, but only, you think only the residents of Burkeport would get a notification. Well, if you have the app installed on your phone and you moved and you're down in Burkeport visiting a friend, you also get the notification, it follows you in the county. It's where if we send a notification in a certain affected area, you will get that notification. The, the application, this platform here, if, uh, I've asked him if, you know, if the county commissioner had any questions and that sort, we could do a webinar and a live Q and A with this, with this company here, Code Red, and answer any other questions in addition you may have. The cost for the base level of this service, uh, annually is thirty seven fifty, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That includes thirty thousand annual system voice minutes. That doesn't include if it hits a voicemail or just a live answered phone call.
Now is that... Thirty thousand is that? Well, thirty thousand, is that, if it went out to, say, two thousand people, is that?
There, uh, as long as they answered the phone, if they answered the phone and however long the recording is. So it's, you know, it's kinda like, uh, when you, on radio advertisements.
So if they answer it automatically, a minute?
Yeah, it's around that, right about that. My question is, are, are we already, I, when I wrote out our budget for next year and we submitted it, we, I didn't include this in our lineup, 'cause I was still doing research on it. Is there a way to amend the twenty-nine?
We haven't passed the budget yet for next year, so we're working on that. We'll be working on the budget a lot this week and next week, 'cause Jeff's, you know, got here now, so we can really start hammering now. So if you wanna take your budget or, or give us a new up-to-date budget before we pass, we could always look at that.
Okay.
But the budget's has not been passed yet for next year.
All right, so I could just amend, amend the budget I originally gave you and give you a new copy of it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we decide that we feel like it's useful way to spend money, I would, what Jeff and Gerald don't think. So you said this is the basic, it's thirty seven fifty. So what bells and whistles come with this and what's the other options?
Uh, the bells and whistles, of course, cook, uh, it's the unlimited messaging, um, and then just the thirty thousand minutes of voice. It includes, and if we ever go over, they would, they could, they would bill us overages. Which, he didn't include that.
You know, would it send out text messages, you're saying?
Yes, it's in a text messages.
How many text messages do you get with that thirty seven?
It's something.
So you would send out, two would be in charge of sending out a blanket? Text messages, when you say we got a thunderstorm warning, would that, would that?
See, we should all make a kick out, once the weather, the National Weather Service issues a weather warning, they will automatically send it out. Um, the backside of it, I don't wanna know the details of how it works, but we have what's called our, similar system called Orion, and it will go through and it beat everything out, notifications. It's just kinda like, um, on the weather channel on your phone.
So someone doesn't have to actually sit there and do it?
No. It'll kick it out and it'll have whether my voice or whoever's voices on there. Saying we have a tornado warning, thunderstorm warning for Massacre County. It's a neat, it's a neat service and with social media platform not having everybody attached to that, as most of us are, especially our, our elderly in the county, that's a very big, it's a very big problem. Something else we can use it, after we send out a, like, test notification, we, uh, let's say we have a missing persons in the county and it doesn't meet the criteria for an amber alert or silver alert, uh, like a runaway juvenile, we can send notifications out for that. Um, if the sheriff's office is in an area, the county in chasing, are on, on the, on the, trying to find an armed and dangerous sub- If the sheriff's office is in an area of the county and chasing, uh, on, on the, on the, trying to find an armed and dangerous subject, we can send out that affected area that we think that they're in with descriptors. There's a lot of different ways we can use this service to better communicate with our residents here in Massac County.
Is there any surrounding counties that use this that we can talk to?
Ballard County used Code Red, which they just changed over to the Firehorn, which Firehorn is a lo- is local Paducah created, but the problem, I, I use Firehorn in McCracken County. We have MDTs in our fire trucks and our personal cell phones where we get all the live cat updates. And that does not always work. It has failed numerous times and I can't really rely on that platform.
So this is more Ballard's only county that you know?
Ballard had used it. They went to the Firehorn because it was cheaper, um, which cheaper doesn't always, uh, the quality's not always the greatest.
But there's no one in your Southern Illinois?
I haven't talked with Pope County, Plaski County. I haven't talked with any of them to see if they use Code Red just yet. The Code Red is, it's more or less one that I had, I personally have dealt with before in the past at Ballard when I was a nine-one-one dispatcher. And it was a reliable service at the time.
Have you talked to any of the other supporting agencies to see if they agreed that this could be helpful, like the sheriff's office or?
I talked to Ted and he said it was a great idea. He said that in the past it was, um, the server set the county used to use was outrageous price. He said this is, of course, is a lot cheaper price. I haven't talked with Massey or, uh, Children's yet.
Well, I guess I'll think about it on what Jeff and Gerald thoughts are on.
That can be our goal, uh, early goal for twenty nineteen. The office wise, through our nuclear grant, we secured, uh, we, uh, through nuclear grant, we, uh, there was funds already in there that we, that was secured, twenty nineteen, uh, for laptops. We, uh, we said we'd get those and those actually come, those don't have to be reimbursed by the county. We have our own separate account for the nuclear grants, so, and will come out anywhere in our budget. Um, within those lap, within the laptops, I have, I set up a VPN where I access the office remotely. Anywhere we have internet connection, um, access any of our documents, uh, any of our mapping, anything in the office, our resources, our printers, we're able to access that remotely now. Right now, inventory wise, I have, uh, set up, I'm working on finding open source inventory software. And I've got a barcode scanner and a printer to inventory all, everything in our office. So we're able to give more accurate, uh, doc, uh, detail, uh, document to the clerk's office when it comes time for inventory. We have, we're working on the ham radios, the ham radio side, uh, we're working, their communications trailer's out there. We're trying to get that, see what we need to do to get that fully in service. We're working with Dr. Hicks out at the hospital, radiologist, and he's been helping us. We're scheduled somewhere in January to, for me and Brian to do our ham, ham license. Angel tree wise, we're down to five. Actually, I added two last week and after my WPSB thing aired, we had a lot of people come in and we got thank yous.
When are they due back?
They're due back by December seventeen. So Chris, you're doing the nice little thing you did, uh, really helped out.
How many volunteers do y'all have right now?
We have, right at seven, I think it was right at seven last time I counted. I met with a, one of the old volunteers, Harold Hicks, yesterday. He's a ham, he's already a licensed ham operator, so it'd be a great asset to us, you know, give him an application. He's supposed to return that. Now, uh, we'll switch gears. We're on the IT side of it. Where do I turn in the type sheet at?
Turn it in the county clerk's office and they will fill out a, uh, a sheet for the claim sheet and then we'll get you paid.
Okay. Um, and also I reached out to, uh, my representative at CDWG, um, giving pricing for email. I bought, uh, found a domain, I bought a domain, it's called Massac.us, um, for, uh, for the county to use if we decide to go on, if an email cert, email setup. So we don't have to worry about the domain. I just can, uh, have to set up all the outlet accounts and that nature. It would be the hosted outlook, which is cheaper than getting what's called an exchange server. The cost on that is very high and the equipment maintenance is crazy. But with host wise, usually it averages on a regular consumer business base around five, four to eight dollars per user. But I'm gonna see on the government, uh, government state contract and what the price will be for that.
What's the purpose of using this? What's the?
Email, so email. So that each individual office can have its own email, have an email like, um, you know, Haley, Haley@Massac.us and we can control, if somebody puts, she's inhabited, we can forward her emails to the next county clerk. Any of the office holders or anybody in the offices, we could have their own email accounts. Pretty much all I've got.
Do your volunteers for the ham radio and this, do they have to have their license?
Yes, yes, they have to have the.
Will you pay for that, whether they'll pay?
That, we haven't gotten any, we have not got that far. If we're gonna pay for it or.
How much is the cost?
It's about fifteen dollars per, per test you take.
How much does you get there?
Yeah, to be, to transmit on the emergency frequency, you have to be a, a general, a licensed general. To, uh, to be able to access that certain side of the spectrum on the radio side. We could be communicating with Springfield. So you have to have me a general. Any other questions, do you think?
No, I think.
Gerald again?
No.
All right, well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, please.
Please, sir.
There it is. Just a little deceiving. Much better. She's working on, uh, maybe getting a different email address and stuff.
Good.
Just make sure that we let her know, cause a lot of times he emails stuff back and forth.
Yep, so, yeah, just let me know, whatever that is. Been nice if they'd left the old one for you just to use, but, yeah. That's not hard to set an email up, so. All right, so I didn't know if you guys had a copy of the proposal or not from two weeks ago, or I needed to bring some, so I just brought some. So. Give Jeff a little update here on how things have been running. This is a eight-year comparison. Do I have enough copies to give her one?
Yep.
Keep going.
So Haley was in the insurance business there.
Oh, awesome. All right, so she'll, she'll understand a little bit, man?
Great, great.
So in two thousand and eleven, the county was using Blue Cross Blue Shield. Their max out-of-pocket cost there was six hundred and five thousand. We took over in twelve and as you can see, in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen, we spent less money than what they were spending with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Same deductible, co-pays, we didn't change any of that, just a, a different way of, of providing healthcare to the employees. Seventeen got up there. Um, it has come down a little bit though in, in eight. Had a fairly significant claims last year. That's why we had two hundred and thirty-eight thousand from our stop-loss carrier to send money back to us. So we are starting to see that come down. I would suspect next year will be even better, so. The county is what we call partially self-funded, so they buy a, a stop-loss or a, um, large deductible, okay? The employee still sees their deductible, their two-fifty, their thousand-dollar, um, co-insurance for max of twelve fifty out-of-pocket. In fact, I brought, uh, I brought a copy of the healthcare plan. You wanna take a look at it? I don't know if anybody's ever given you one, Haley, or not. And we can go over that later. That's, that's no problem. Um, happy to go over that with you. But, uh, anyway, so, yeah, um, and, and what we're able to do here with, with Maxak is pretty much what we've done in, in a lot of the groups I, I handle. Many years, we are under what they were spending when they left their, their previous carrier, so. Here is, I'll give you a breakdown by month for this year. So this just kinda yields you a, uh, by month costs, claims, um, RX claims, fixed cost, and then what the total was for the month. So. And then we, of course, annualize the, the ending since we didn't have November and December just yet, um, so. So as far as the renewals go, I think that's. So for the renewal, what we're looking at here, the, the left column, our left column is what we're currently doing. Enrollment's about sixty-four employees on here. We're charging twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents monthly admin fee. That is guaranteed through twelve, thirty-one, and twenty, so we've still got, I guess, two years on that. The network fee, we use Health Link, um, and that's eight dollars per employee per month. And that gives you that total under administration and PPL fees. Your excess loss coverage, your stop-loss, um, the county right now is sitting at thirty-five thousand is what they buy. There's no lasers, no aggregating specific deductibles, annual maximum, lifetime maximums, both unlimited. We're in what we call a paid basis, so it's, it's kinda like it's fully insured as far as claims go, because if there was a claim that was hanging out there from two thousand and twelve, we would go back and, and pick that up. So it's basically like you're, you're fully insured on a claims basis at least. And then, uh, of course, benefits covered, medical and RX, and then our, our premiums are listed there, composite total annual premium. We've got that on sixty-one, um, because one of the plans we offer called the MRP or the Medical Reimbursement Plan, we don't pay reinsurance on those folks, okay? The MRP is an option under the county's healthcare plan that if you have coverage through your spouse where they work at or whatever, we'll reimburse all the deductibles, the co-pays and the co-insurance for you, your spouse, and any children on that spouse's plan. And we don't have to pay reinsurance on that, cause we're never gonna have a, a reinsurance claim on you guys. Now, if anything would ever happen to those folks and their spouse would lose that coverage, they can come back on the regular plan. We just need to know what the date's gonna be, so, um, not a problem there. So that's why there's a, a difference.
Under that plan, you said, is that the spouse and the kids all included on that or just the primary person?
Typically, we'll put all of them on it. And that's kinda one of the carrots to get them to, to take it, cause we can't make them, them take it, but.
That's the plan I use.
When, when we explain it to the members, they're, they're on board.
Which one is that?
The MRP. So what a lot of people think is when they have, let's say, for instance, you're here, you can be covered here, but you're also covered with your spouse. What a lot of people think is, well, if I have coverage through the county and through my spouse, I'm gonna get a hundred percent, a hundred percent benefit. That's not the case. You've got deductibles, co-pays on both plans, and then you also have that nasty little combination of words called coordination of benefit. And the problem with that is if one says they're not gonna pay due to whatever reason, then the secondary carrier says, well, if the primary didn't pay, then we're not gonna pay, which leaves you holding back. And so with the MRP, we get rid of all of that. We make the primary payer responsibility on your spouse's plan. So you're covered over there, okay? We're gonna pick up all the deductibles, the co-pays and the co-insurance on that other plan for you, your spouse, and any, and any children that would be covered over there. So we shifted primary payer responsibility over there and we're giving you the hundred percent benefit you thought you would be getting by having two different insurances and we eliminate the coordination of benefit. So it's a win-win all the way around. And, uh, yeah, so usually when I explain that to people, it takes them just a little bit to catch on. And once they catch on, I mean, they love it, think it's the greatest thing. And that's just one of the many things that we do differently than what other carriers and TPA's do out there.
And how it helps the county, it shifts the liability off of us.
Right.
So that's why, you know, it, it ends up saving us, cause we're not, you know, meeting our stop-loss or something like that with the majors.
Right, yeah. Cause you'll never, that person, um, will never meet the stop-loss here, because they're not covered under the stop-loss. Cause they're covered under the spouse's plan. So if they have a hundred thousand dollar claim, that's going to the spouse's plan, not the county. So we're still protecting the county, basically. Mutual Medical, which is our TPA, they're based out of Peoria, Illinois. They've been doing this for forty-two years now. And their whole philosophy is if they can find someone else willing to pay the claim on your employee where the county comes out ahead and the employee comes out ahead, then it's a win-win situation. And so they're very much into shifting costs, but when they do it, they shift it in an employee-friendly manner. Typically, when you start talking about shifting costs in healthcare and, and insurance, what saves the county money costs the employee and what saves the employee money costs the county. So that's, that, that is a, a big thing. You know, a lot of my competitors will come in and say, well, you know, you're getting a ten or fifteen or twenty percent increase. Let's just go ahead and raise the deductible five hundred or a thousand dollars or whatever, you know, or up the, the co-pays. Well, all you're doing is shifting the cost back to the employees. That's the last place Mutual Medical looks to, to shift costs to. They would rather find other available payers and that can be, you know, other healthcare plans, just like what we were talking about. Medicare, Medicaid, um, oh, TRICARE if you're in the military. Or now we have a great big one out there called Obamacare. Mutual Med also has a plan and, and it's in your booklet there called the ACP or the Affordable Care Plan. We can move someone the first of any month to an Obamacare plan, typically Blue Cross Blue Shield. The county picks up the cost of that for the employee and all of the out-of-pockets, so deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, making it a hundred percent plan as far as they're concerned, but they have to qualify with, um, we're assuming they're gonna have twenty-five thousand or more in claims, which is typical. And so we're able to shift all that away from the county and we save significant amounts of, of money by doing that. And, you know, we can do that for people that, you know, maybe have ongoing cancer, um, high-risk pregnancies, hip replacement, knee replacement, high-cost drugs. You know, some of these high-cost drugs out here, we can get what they call a patient assistance program for that individual and get that drug for free. Well, if we can get that drug for free, the employee is happy, but it also saves the county, because otherwise the county's paying the cost of that drug and, and, you know, things like sumera, we're talking five thousand dollars a month, sixty thousand dollars a year. And so if we can get one or two of those shifted away where, again, the employee's getting it for free, it ain't costing them anything. But once in a while, we run into a drug that has some sort of a, um, salary requirement or, or income level and so, you know, the member may not get it because they make too much money. So in that instance, we can put them over on the ACP and we'll let Blue Cross or whoever pick up the cost of that, that med. We'll reimburse whatever the co-payer is on, on that drug. And again, the member's happy to, to do that. So, um, it's, it's been a tremendous saver. I, I know Mutual Medical is quoted as saying that in the last four years, they've shifted probably close to a hundred million dollars in, in large ongoing claims due to it. So, and that's, that's why we're able to keep the cost level or less than what you were spending when you, when you came over. Because the, the problem with the healthcare industry today, all they care about is they just wanna process those claims. Nobody wants to look at them, nobody wants to think about them, you know, um, I, I know Mutual Med's got several different examples, but, you know, they got a claim in, it's been several years ago. I know Mutual Med's got several different examples, but, you know, they got a claim in, it's been several years ago. It was a, an employee's spouse and they were trying to bill Mutual Medical for a mammogram for the spouse, it happened to be a male. Well, the mammogram actually was on the wife, but the doctor's office screwed up something somehow. And so, of course, we caught that and said, I think you need to send this back through with the correct information on it. But, you know, some of these big carriers, Blue Cross and them, most of the time they don't look at claims and that could have just went through and nobody thought nothing about it. And so they, Mutual Medical looks at every single claim that comes through the door with two cents of human eyes, which is totally different than anything in the industry currently. Like I said, most of the time, they just want to press a button, pay the claims and they don't, they don't think twice about it. So that's, that's their big, big thing. I've been doing it for, for forty years, forty-plus, so. But, so anyways, sorry, back, back to the, the renewal here. So, so we've got the individual excess, we've got the aggregate coverage on that. Now, we do pay aggregate reinsurance on even the MRPs because if we have an aggregate claim, meaning if we have enough employees, so we've got two levels of protection. We've got the thirty-five thousand, so no one single person can have enough claims if they hurt the group, okay? But then we also have what we call aggregate coverage that in case there's a whole bunch of people that don't meet the thirty-five, but they have like twenty-five, thirty, you know, we've got ten, fifteen, twenty of those, we have what we call aggregate coverage so that if we go over that predetermined number, then we'll get money back that way as well. So we're protected, we're protected from one single person having a large claim and, and hurting the county. And we also have protection so that a group of people can't have a lot of claims and hurt the county, okay? So. And so, yeah, you can, you can see what all that is. So we've got a renewal A, which is in the middle, that's keeping everything exactly where it's at, same stop loss, everything, nothing changes, okay? The increase there, it goes from three oh seven oh four composite rate to three sixteen twenty-five or six thousand seven forty-two sixty difference. So about five hundred dollars a month increase overall for all, you know, that's total. Or if we want, we can look at moving that stop loss twenty-five hundred dollars to thirty-seven fifty from thirty-five and everything stays the same, so no increases. And last year, we've only, we've only had one person meet that stop loss and, and that's, that's typical. It is none to one, maybe two. Because, you know, as good as the ACP is, it's good for those things that we can plan for in advance. Somebody wakes up, have a stroke in the shower one morning, can't really do that. So. Any questions?
What's the cost of a single employee under the plan?
Right now, you guys are charging a single employee seventy-seven dollars, is that right? It's like thirty-seven, thirty-eight every paper.
Yeah, well, that's sixty-five dollars a month.
So, so that's what they're paying. So for a single employee here, we would, we would just add up the, the stop loss and the admin cost. But I think you guys, I think they implemented that the employees were paying something back in, what, two thousand thirteen? Was it two thousand twelve? It's, it's been a long time ago. In fact, we'd have been, I think it was at least thirteen because we had been on, on the case for at least a year. I recommended not doing any of that, let Mutual Medical and their cost controls, you know, come in and start saving the money. But the county said, we need to get the employees paying a portion and that has never changed. That amount's never went up, has it? So.
What does it cost the county per employee? I know it's on here somewhere, but I'm not.
You're, you're looking at, I, I can get the single rate for you, I don't have that with me, but I can get that single rate for you, that's.
So nine dollars, I think, didn't it?
Yeah. Because we're, we're funding, because all that money goes into a pool and we use that to pay claims, stop loss, all of that stuff. And so all the clerk has to do is, she's got a little worksheet that, you know, we've got this many, well, actually, it wouldn't even matter whether they're single or family, which I don't think you really got any families. I think it's all strictly single. So that's why we use that composite rate, it's just, it's this rate and she multiplies that times seventy, or I'm sorry, sixty-four and sends the, either sends a check to Symmetra or she sends that to Mutual Medical and we cut the check. I'm not exactly sure how they've got that set up, I think you guys maybe put that in check.
I think so.
Yeah. So. You want to get that total before you make a decision on anything, I mean?
No, no, I was just, I was just, I was just wondering, just.
I would, you know, I've got a lot of competitors that say, we can save you money, we can save you money.
Oh, I'm not.
Show me over five years.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, I, I was just wondering, just.
I noticed the city made some changes to their, their plan. I noticed that. A re-enlocked in the contract, you know, we'll wait till twenty, twenty twenty before we can make a sign. I know we got, you know, some agreements with their contract.
Yeah, so what they changed was some of the, the cost on drugs and different stuff now.
They went to like where you would give mail to you, like a.
Yeah, see, they've always had that, but they never implemented that it was mandatory that after, you know, if you got a, a script that you were going to get, let's say. Yeah, blood pressure. That they had to get that mail order. Mail order actually saves considerable amount of money. Comes every three months, just like clockwork, once it gets set up, you don't have to worry about it. The city had never had that, they always allowed the employee, if they wanted to go to Walgreens or Metropolis Drugs one or two, just to walk in and get that thirty-day script every month. Well, that actually increases the cost of the drugs because they can be getting those mail order and get a cheaper cost. And that was something they had never done before, but this year they implemented that. So as long as it doesn't hinder anything with union contracts, yeah, we can, we can do that, absolutely.
I see pluses in mind, somebody plus where it does save the county, the negative is it hurts the economy of the business owners in, in the town.
It does, except for, you know, they're only getting a fill fee. That's all Metropolis Drugs one or two or Walgreens, that's all any of those guys get. It is just a fill fee, which is a buck or, or two bucks or three bucks per script. So it is a little bit of a double-edged sword there in, in that respect. And, you know, there's some employees that, you know, absolutely, I, I've just got to use my, my local, you know. But I've got people all the time and it's like, man, this is one draw. I don't have to worry about it, my doctor gives me a script for it every ninety days, it's in the mail, so.
Be beneficial for elderly for sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, without a doubt, yeah.
I know my dad has to go every day to get a script.
That gives you a chance to get out of the house, too.
Yeah, you know, whether he needs to or not.
That's just what I was going to say, whether he needs to or not. So, so yes, we can look at, you know, if we want to make some of those changes, most definitely.
We all give the, one of these renewals or do you all want to think about it or do you want to do?
It looks fine to me, yeah.
Renewal A or B?
What do you think that, that we should do? Do you think we should raise it to thirty-seven five and keep it the same? Now, is that the three oh seven or three sixteen, is that, who's, whose pocket does that come out of? Is that the employee or the county's or?
That, that's the county's.
The county's?
Yeah.
I think Jeremy said we only hit the thirty-five twice, once or twice, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to get hurt the rights of everyone, if one person is all it's ever given. Just to let you know I'm here, Jason.
Okay, thank you, John.
How you doing, Jeremy?
I'm good, how are you, John?
Doing very well.
Good, good.
Hey, Jeff, I'm John Taylor. Good to meet you. Good to meet you, sir. How's it going, Jeremy?
I'm good.
And there's Michelle. Get the camera off of him.
So whatever, what's the pros and cons of Jeremy, too? You know, really, you're looking at, I mean, we're talking, I think it's a three percent overall increase. Sixty-seven hundred dollars, I mean, that's, and, and the increase is only on the stop loss, that's it. You know, under a fully insured plan, that increase will be on the full cost of the healthcare plan. Where, you know, right now, this year, we're running, looking at six hundred and forty-eight thousand, so, you know, it's, it's three percent actually of the stop loss, not of the whole six hundred thousand, which is a tremendous difference. So. Five hundred dollars and change a month to, to stay at thirty-five or, you know, bump it twenty-five hundred bucks and keep everything where it's at. I mean, to me, it's a toss-up.
So instead of thirty-five out of pocket?
Not, not out of pocket, the county, the county would be on the hook for thirty-seven five.
Versus thirty-five.
Right, minus any deductibles or copays that are taken.
So if we only had one person that ever hit it.
Yeah, so, so if you want to look at it this way.
We'd save, it was a possibility, we'd save, save six thousand dollars a year versus the twenty-five hundred if one person hit it.
Well, look at it in this, this respect. The cost would be sixty-seven forty-two if we keep everything where it's at. So if we go to the thirty-seven five, you'd have to have three people hit the stop loss next year before we.
Right, before we go in the red.
Yeah.
We had one person last year.
Right.
Probably due to cancer.
Um, I don't know, I, I'd have to look. Actually, I don't, no, I don't think so. I think it was heart, the cancer, I mean, it's two major things, so.
Exactly. So are you making a motion to go with the renewal B?
Just asking questions.
I mean, I'm good with it if you want, I mean.
You know, I just, you know, I mean, seems like we could possibly save the money upfront and then we, like you said, we got to go three, three deep before we go in the red. I mean, it's, it's a chance, a toss-up, like you said, so.
And, you know, we've been good here lately with everybody understanding our plans about, they got some pre-planned surgeries, they're notifying Jeremy, which is keeping us out of that, hitting that stop loss. We know, I know of a few instances where some people's having some knee surgery and they're notifying them. And that's, that's helped us.
And, and I, you know, not your group, but I have, once people get it and understand the ACP, you know, I've got people that call me all the time, hey, I'm having, I had some, I called the other day, I'm having cataract surgery. Will that qualify me for the ACP? Because they really would like to be on the ACP. Because they, they get it, they understand, hey, this is a hundred percent benefit. Unfortunately, cataract surgery doesn't.
It's elective, I guess, or?
No, this was, this was due to something else, but it was medical. But the claims weren't going to be the like five thousand or less. So it doesn't reach that threshold, so. But hey, A for effort.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go with the referral B.
I'll second that motion. So it looks like, is the total annual premium is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, is that right?
Sorry?
Yes, so it's, it's same as what you're, you're paying now.
Okay, so on that motion, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. To prove the two thousand and nineteen health insurance. Want to call a rule on that that they, that they, that they.
Carlisle.
Yeah.
Jason Farm.
Yes.
George Hill.
Yeah.
And Jeffrey.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy. So, yeah, if you guys have any questions on that stuff, give me a call, I'll be happy to walk you through it or schedule time to come down and meet you and we can, we can take a look at it and, and I'll explain, you know, because we got the maxi, the MRP, the ACP, and I can explain all the differences.
I'll need to be with you sometime and sign myself up.
Okay, yeah, no, it's fine, just give me a call anytime, sooner the better. You were effective, what, twelve one?
Yesterday.
Okay, okay, so, so, yeah, we just need to send in the change and let them know what you're going to be on, so. So, yeah, if you want to give me a buzz myself on that card.
Okay, and then you can give me a list of options and processes and.
Yeah, yeah. Well, i- if you're going to be single, it's, it's the sixty-five, sixty-eight, whatever that is. And then I'll see if I can get ahold of some paperwork on what the family costs.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Lunch later?
I, I can, unfortunately, these guys, we can, I got a bit of work to do.
Jeremy, you got time for lunch today?
I do.
About noon?
You're done? Can't go until dawn.
Oh, it's.
We had to set the card.
Yeah, they're going to all of those.
Do we, both? The both, both?
Yeah, we'll go there. That's fine, about noon?
I can't.
Can't go.
I don't know.
Well, hell, you just.
I've got, I've got, well, I'm standing here.
Oh.
Good question.
Got, got some money you need to leave, huh? I don't think I've been out there in a long time, it's pretty good.
Well, Thanksgiving wasn't too bad, it was actually better than last time I was here.
Bridges is really good.
Is it? I'm not bad enough.
Yeah, it's good.
Listen here.
Never eat Bridges breakfast, but their lunch and dinner is really good.
Be sure to get your, your card if you go to the buffet because when you're being lucky, you get the half off.
Oh, did you? So, all right, yeah, noon, I'll, I'll meet you down there.
Both?
Yeah. What'd you say?
This thing right here.
Oh, Rick's, now, I'm just, I mean, I want to just look into it, think about it, I'm going to go over it. It's called Red, what you're talking about? I thought you said OnStar.
I did say.
I want to both, no.
Anytime.
I'm not available Friday.
Tomorrow or Thursday, y'all gonna be down?
I think.
Yeah, I can either day.
I, I probably can either day.
What day is better for you guys?
Probably either. I can't remember what I've been going on, so.
If I have to be present, I will be here Thursday.
You don't have to be, it's just us three just working on the budget. Uh. You want mornings, afternoons, or y'all want to?
Either, good morning.
Okay. What time? Would you like just a few minutes after eight, I took my kids to school, or y'all want to?
Yeah, it's fine, it's.
Nine or?
Few minutes after eight would be good, and we'll get mine to school, too.
You want to do tomorrow or Thursday? Jeremy?
I don't.
I don't care.
Either way, I'm good.
You can go with those things. So let's just do tomorrow then. We have a new Thursday coming soon, so about eight fifteen tomorrow?
Yeah.
Is that my third? Everybody's.
I think so.
Is there anything over there that I can sign? I think there's a bunch of them over there.
Some of these?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can look down.
I didn't have a look down.
Well, what did she say, was she happy with everything you talked to?
She said she didn't know if it was waiting to mount. Yes, she said it hadn't rained since she had actually, since that guy had been there and she, she didn't, she didn't have any idea. I mean, the front end didn't make the roof and it. I don't know what it did, but it must have been raining. So like me, they did the right thing, but yeah.
Job well done, Jeremy. Job well done.
Another one will come here and kill me.